Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call Rome.
All the women tires. All the woman Middlebrook.
Present.
Thank you. Solomon Bosley.
Present.
All the woman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
All the woman and Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
All the woman Rice.
Here.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
All the woman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
Good morning, all the woman board. This is Melby.
All the woman Switzer.
Present.
All the woman Howard.
Present.
All the woman Green.
Present.
Alderman Altenberg.
Present.
All the woman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
All the woman Davis. All the woman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vakoro.
Present.
Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Kong.
Present.
All the woman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
All the woman Boyd.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
All the woman Sires. All the woman and Gracia.
Present.
All the woman Martin. Alderman Stevens. All the woman Davis. Alderman Mohammed. Twenty-three present.
For being present, we are blessed today to be led in prayer by Pastor Chuck Norris, who is the president of the St. Louis Clergy Coalition and the pastor of St. James AME. I also want to thank all the women from the twenty-seventh for inviting him here today. Let's give him a round of applause as he comes to the podium. Pastor Norris, President, we're in your hands.
Okay, amen. Well, we're in God's hands. That's why we're here today to strengthen that connection, amen, so that we can stay focused on the most important things, amen. Thank you for your kind and gracious introduction, as you often do, and I thank you all for the opportunity to come and lead us in prayer before you conduct this important business of our city. Oh, God, we thank you for this day, for truly it is the day that you have made, and we have come to rejoice and be glad in it. But, God, we know that we've only come this far by faith, leaning and depending on something bigger than us, something more awesome than us, something more loving than us, that is your grace and your mercy, and most of all, that thing that we call love, because it's the love that we have for you that you will instill with us, that we might have that for one another. So, God, now that we've come this far by faith, Lord, we pray for these leaders, Lord, that the people of St. Louis have entrusted, that have faith in them, that they might do the right thing, that they might do the things that help provide relief and provide comfort. Oh, God, we pray right now that you will encourage them, that you will strengthen them, oh, that you might give them supernatural knowledge and wisdom and understanding that surpasses anything that could ever be learned in a book, because, God, we know that you have the whole world in your hand. We know you hold back all kinds of things. So, God, we just pray, Lord, that you use these instruments called all the persons, Lord, that you release the resources that are needed. Oh, God, we pray against division and backbiting, and any evil spirit might seek to divide and conquer. For, God, that we know that we can, if we would just trust and depend on you, if we would lean on your guidance, if we would lean into you, God, that you'll give us the answers. And as you said in your word, not only will if we humble ourselves and pray, but you will hear our prayer and that you will heal the land. So, God, right now, in the name of your son, Jesus, heal the land, heal bodies that might be infirm, heal minds that might not be set right. Oh, God, heal anything that is out of order, that it might be put in your divine order, so that we might move forward in the unity and the peace, so that your word will be true, how sweet and pleasant it is when God's children come together in unity. So, we thank you for this community, but we thank you for the unity in it, and we'll just continue to give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor. It's in your great name, we pray, we believe, and we trust and claim these things as done, amen.
Amen, amen. Pastor Chuck Norris, Mr. President, thank you so much.
Bless you, bless you. Amen. Thank you all.
Filled up, ready to go now.
Amen, amen. I would love to stay, but I have to get to a ten fifteen meeting now.
Do what you, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bless you all.
Thank you. We will suspend what our regular business, take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. All the one from the nineteenth, you recognized on the motion for our courtesy resolutions count.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar today.
Move by all the one from nineteenth, second by all the one from the twenty-seventh, and all one from the fourteenth, all one from the twenty-seventh, you recognized on courtesy resolution one seventy-nine.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Whichever one you want to take first.
We could do one seventy-nine in order.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could the clerk please read one seventy-nine?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Resolution one seventy-nine honoring Shawn Walker, owner of Candy Shop Custom Bikes LLC. Whereas this honorable board of aldermen of the city of St. Louis during Black History Month recognizes and applauds the innovative and young African-American business owner Shawn Walker. And whereas Mr. Walker is a resident of the Walnut Park neighborhood and is the owner of Candy Shop Custom Bikes LLC, whose business is located in the city of St. Louis. Whereas it was created in two thousand and seven and legally recognized in two thousand and eight. This small bike company specialized in candy painted, vintage bikes and skateboards. They customize the bikes down to the seats with exotic skins and expensive wheels to complement the design. Whereas the business has obtained nationwide notoriety and has been featured in local and national magazines, including Black Men's, Urban Ink, Deluxe Magazine. It also has been featured in the reality show Loving Hip Hop: New York City. Many in the entertainment industry in particular love the lowrider bikes provided by Shawn. Whereas Shawn has done countless concerts, runway shows, nightclub features, and even layouts for album covers. And whereas, as a black-owned company, Shawn has had his share of setbacks, but in two thousand and twenty-one, served as his relaunched. He didn't miss the first pop-up shop in downtown St. Louis on Washington Avenue. Whereas the business's website, www.candyshopbikes.com, which also serves as his first online store, is very active and functional. In January two thousand and twenty-two, Shawn had his first Los Angeles product Photoshop shoot for ads. Now he is commissioned to find the brand of facility for production so they can stop outpouring their products. Whereas, as a resident in Walnut Park, Mr. Walker desires to find a facility in the neighborhood where he lives. While searching for a building, he found that most of the residents in the neighborhood do not own their own homes. Only about twenty to twenty-five percent of the residents are owners. And whereas, because of this, Shawn launched their scam-like Walnut Park campaign to encourage citizens in Walnut Park to own properties where they live and do business in their community, to create a sense of empowerment and community. Now therefore, let it be resolved by this honorable board of aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and honor during Black History Month Mr. Shawn Walker and his innovative business Candy Shop Custom Bikes LLC, as well as his effort to encourage property ownership as part of his work to improve the African-American community. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of this proceeding and prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this eighteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-two by the honorable Pamela Boyd, twenty-seventh ward alderwoman, adopted this eighteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. I didn't, I don't, I'm not gonna take a long time to talk about this, but it was powerful to me because, as I keep telling people, our youth are the entrepreneurs of our future. And Shawn Walker is a youth that's within the Walnut Park neighborhood. And what I have learned from raising my kids in Walnut Park, the people that live in Walnut Park are honored to be a part of Walnut Park, and they want people to understand that this community is not negative as the media says us to be. And so, on this day, I want to congratulate Mr. Shawn Walker and thank him for being persistent and continuously fighting to build Walnut Park with other youth within our community. Mr. Walker, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
Was that before or after? I stopped crying, ma'am. Thank you, thank you so much, all the woman board. I thank you and I appreciate you so much for honoring our efforts and just the acknowledgement. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you.
Uh, uh, hold on one second. All the men from the twenty-second?
Yes, going on, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to salute Mr. Shawn Walker for all his efforts. I've been knowing Mr. Walker for several years. He also happens to be my fire inspector. So, he works for the city of St. Louis, does an awesome job. I'll tell you what really inspires me beyond the bikes is, I hope I'm not telling too much of your business, Shawn, but Shawn is a single parent who's doing a phenomenal job raising his children. If you see him on Facebook, I mean, they look happy. He's just doing big things. I don't think single dads get shout-outs enough. And so, in addition to being a business owner, this man is a single black man doing big things. You know, he's there with his family. He believes in his community. I wish I had some space in the twenty-second ward for you. I'll keep looking, because I know it's time for you to grow and expand, and I just really, really appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Not gonna happen. We not letting him go, sorry.
All the woman from the fourteenth.
I just want to commend him, and I wish he would have brought a bike to see. I'm excited. I guess I'll have to look him up on Facebook, because these sound really exciting, the bicycles. I haven't seen them, but, you know. Do you have any samples on Facebook, Mr. Walker?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do, at Candy Shop Bikes, Custom Bikes on Facebook, as well as our website, candyshopbikes.com.
Okay, I'm interested in seeing those. They look like they're real works of art. Sounds like they're very.
It truly is. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry, I was muted. All the woman from the nineteenth.
He was on mute.
All the one from the.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. So, I have followed you on Facebook. When I saw your face, I said, oh, that's, that's the guy. Because your face is not on Facebook enough, but your product is. And I want to commend you, because anytime you can make a dream come true and make it as creative and exciting as you have made it, those are the kinds of things that can encourage our young people. And we have got to find your space. These are the type of initiatives that we are talking about using some of our funds for, to have outlets for our young people. Can you imagine if a young person had the opportunity to learn that trade with you and build their own, what they could decide to do later on? I just thank you. I thank you so much. And being a single parent, and most especially a male single parent, it is a very different type of experience. We know as women, single parents, there are certain respects that we get. But as it was mentioned, men don't normally get that. But you are very level-headed, you are very determined, and I wish you the best. And, you know, I try to respect you all, but don't be, don't get mad if I take him, okay? Don't get mad. Thank you.
No, no, no.
Moment from the twenty-third. There we go. Yes, um, actually, I would just like to make a motion that we do this in bank.
Thank you.
Been moved by all the one from the twenty-third and.
Second.
Second by the one from the twenty-sixth, that we make this resolution in bank. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Create another copy of resolution one seventy-nine and bank.
No noted.
All right, all the men from the fifth.
Mr. Walker, I would just like to congratulate you on your entrepreneurial spirit for your stellar performance as a single parent. But having said all that, I just have a single, just one question for you. Do you have any sweet customizations for an old-school Kawasaki Concorde rider?
That's a motorcycle. We may have to bearings off of that thing.
I have to stop by and see you, and congratulations again.
Thank you. I think Alderman Reed rides a bike. We can put some candy on that thing, too.
Yeah, yeah. I ride a Concorde. One of my bikes, a Concorde, just like Alderman Page. See, all the one from the fourth. All the one.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, President. Mr. Walker, you are a hot commodity today. Everybody is trying to get you, okay? So, I raise my hand to you for the service that you've done for our community, and I hope you keep it up. And I'm gonna throw my beer in, too, Mr. Walker, for the fourth one. So, thank you, and. We already have a building. We have a building for him. Thank you.
All right, all the men from the third.
I, too, would like a piece of that action. Bring it. No, but, uh, really appreciate you, brother. There is a whole lot of opportunities out there for us, and when they have a unique one, you know, it's good to celebrate that. I don't have any bike shops in or around my ward. I don't know many on the north side, but I don't know any bike shop in the entire city where black man is making custom bikes. Now, that is, that's cold, you know. So, definitely I've been thinking about getting me a bike. I don't have one, haven't had one since I was like fifteen. It's about time. So, you know, there'll be something I'd definitely be looking into, looking at your products. I haven't seen them, but I think it's amazing that we have a custom bike shop here in the city of St. Louis, and a black man is, you know, is running that bike shop. So, you know, once again, with those Harper funds, hopefully, you know, we all can kind of work some out, see if we can get a youth program going or something like that. That'd be really cool. I know there are other shops here within the city, like on the south side, and larger shops and things like that. Maybe we can talk to some alders and connect some folks, you know, add some more resources to the pot. But amazing job, brother. Continue to inspire doing what it is that you do, and, you know, making the city proud. Thank you.
Yes.
Further discussion, further discussion. Shawn, I just want to really congratulate you on the job well done. This is a, you know, as you know, from being around the city, this is the highest honor the city has to give any organization or individual. And especially for African-Americans who have had their history rewritten and written out of history so oftentimes in this nation. So, to be honored in this way by the entire board and have the entire board say they want their name added to your resolution is, is big. So, when you think about what your bikes are gonna do and how they're gonna be, how they are true works of art and will travel through time beyond even your existence and all of our existence, that's major, you know. As an artist, you get an opportunity to express yourself in that way, and I thank you for that. I also think that you are primed to have a, a reality show. I mean, when you think about, when you look at, and some of you all, just, just go out there and Google and take a look at some of his designs, and you'll see what I mean. I think that it is really unique, the things that you're doing. So, one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research records of the city of St. Louis, there'll be, people will be able to read about this day, the day that we took our time to honor you for a job well done, to honor you for your art and your, the things that you have given back to this community. So, let's give him a big round of applause and thank you for what he's done. Congratulations, Shawn, and, and I think Alderman Page said it best. We need you to take a look at Concourse fourteen hundred, see what you can do about these motorcycles. We feeling, we're feeling left out now. I have a couple of them I could drop off to you. All right, but congratulations, Shawn. All one from twenty-seven, do you have anything else you want to close with on that one?
Now, I just want to thank him again, and it does my heart good, because even when I was in the neighborhood, just the lady building the block, you know, Shawn was very connected with me, and I always reached out to the young people. So, that shows us that our young people have the talent in our community, and we have a lot of entrepreneurs in there. And so, I'm just trying to bring them out for the community to understand that the positiveness that we have in our community that young people can bring. Thank you so much, Shawn. And I think, Mr. President, if internet is all froze up off and on today, so I think that's what's going on. Our internets are really crazy.
Okay, let's give Shawn a bit, one more big round of applause. Thank you. All one from twenty-seven.
Okay, the next resolution is for resolution one eighty, and that is recognition of Speak A Easy Restaurant and Bar. And I'm not gonna ask the clerk to read it, because both of them had to work today, so they weren't able to come. But I wanted to recognize them as a, a long-term business within the twenty-seven ward. They started that, this business came to the twenty-seventh in nineteen eighty-four. And so, it was ironic, because it's still standing. And I think the thing that really threw my attention is they have Free Fish Fridays. So, every Friday, they give away fish dinners from four to six thirty. So, I want to recognize Darryl and his partner in regards to the Speak Easy and being so committed to our community. And again, to let people understand that in recognition of African-American History Month, these are African-Americans that are contributing to our communities, and they are standing firm to stay in our community. So, I applaud them to speak A Easy Restaurant and Bar. Thank you.
Thank you. All the men from the twenty-third. Yeah, I think we should all go there tonight for free fish. All right. That's the cheap side of me. The other side, I'm just saying, you know, since we're recognizing these businesses, even though they're not here, I think I would like to make a motion, we do it in bank anyway, because I think. It's been moved by all the men from the twenty-third, second by all the men from the twenty-second, and there was somebody else I missed. And the twenty-sixth, and the twenty-sixth, that we make resolution one eighty in bank in a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please create another copy of resolution one eighty in bank. All the one from the nineteenth.
I just wanted to give a few additional comments. And all the woman boys, you just brought back some memories for me. I mean, some good memories, that not only is, is that business longstanding, but it was, it's an important longstanding business. It was, it's a gathering place for adults. We have many topics of concern that are discussed there. We have opportunities for people to associate with other entities that they probably normally wouldn't. And so, all of our organized social clubs in our African-American community, they normally end up there, have any event, and being what we call a community. And, you know, we get to know each other. And so, I really do appreciate that site, because they've never had problems. We felt safe and comfortable, and the fish is off the chain, okay? Just understand that. It is incredible. But thank you so much for honoring them, and that just really took me back, and I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, all the woman.
You're welcome.
All the one from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like the clerk to please read resolution one eighty-one.
Madam Clerk, please read resolution one eighty-one.
Resolution one eighty-one honoring the Living with Purpose Organization. Whereas this honorable board of aldermen of the city of St. Louis during Black History Month recognizes and applauds the African-American owned and operated Living with Purpose Organization. And whereas, Living with Purpose contracts with the Department of Mental Health to provide residential employment and community service to individuals with disability and mental illnesses. Whereas, Living with Purpose provides resources to the undeserved, low-income communities in North St. Louis with inequities in the areas of substance abuse, I'm sorry, areas of substance use disorders, homelessness, adult literacy, workforce development, household supplies, utility assistance, rent and mortgage assistance, clothing, diapers, grocery vouchers, transportation, and counseling. Whereas their mission is, every life has a purpose, and they do all that they do to ensure that people know and understand that every life has a purpose. Whereas, as one of five selected African-American grassroots organizations by the state of Missouri focusing on opioid epidemic crisis in St. Louis, especially low-income communities such as North St. Louis, Living with Purpose proudly strives to create balance and equality in all that we do while collaborating with other organizations to improve the lives of all whom we encounter. Whereas, Living with Purpose is currently working on a project that reaches out to community so they further know that they are not alone. In collaboration with Crush Coalition, Living with Purpose will be hosting the You Are Not Alone event on April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at their facility located at eighty zero five North Broadway, which is historic part of North St. Louis City, known as the Baton Riverview Community. Whereas, the YANA event is going to focus on bridging the gaps between resources in CD and County by bringing together organizations from both sides to provide services to the entire St. Louis metropolitan area. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the honorable board of aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberation to recognize and honor during Black History Month the Living with Purpose Organization and their many contributions to the city of St. Louis and black community in particular. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of the resolution across the minute of these proceedings and prepare a commemorative copy to the end, that it may be presented at a time and place to those deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduce this eighteenth day of February two thousand and twenty-two by the honorable Lisa Middlebrook, alderwoman of the twenty-second ward.
Second.
Second ward.
All the one from the second, you're recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't say enough about Living with Purpose. When they came into the second ward, they came in, hands raised, feet ready to roll. They not only have this business in the second ward, but they're involved in the community. They go out, they do surveys to see what the needs of the community are. Not only do they see what the needs are, but they actually bring the resources in to help the people in the community with, whether it's school giveaways with backpacks and school supplies, sneakers, free hair. with whether it's um school giveaways with backpacks and school supplies, sneakers, free haircuts, um cotton candy for the kids. It it never uh it seems like it never ends. They're always doing something with the community um and for the community. Again, I can't say enough about this organization. I'm so proud to have them here. There's not a time when I have not called and said, hey, I have a person that needs this, and they're there. Send them to us. We're gonna find the resources to help them, whether it is with drug abuse, homelessness. It doesn't matter. They're gonna find the resources to help that individual or that family in the second ward. And even when it comes down to me meeting a place to meet at, they're like, Alderwoman, just come up here. You can have your meeting here without hesitation. So I absolutely love everyone in this organization. Um, and I couldn't ask for a better partnership with the business for the second ward. And I'll just keep it short. So I think Ms. Kim is here. She's the Chief Financial Officer for Living with Purpose. Um, Kim, good morning.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much, Lisa. Like, that was amazing. Thank you. Um, I mean, on our behalf, we are, I mean, we're just thrilled that we are being acknowledged because we don't look for it. We don't look for it because it's not um it's not something we set out to do when we initially started Living with Purpose. Um, we just wanted to do something different. We just wanted to do something different, and we were blessed with being in a location um that we saw a huge, huge need of different kinds. And is it what was even greater about the location is the location is between the city and the county. So it's so close to the county, although located in the city, that it gives us access to the city and the county. So it gives us access to help so many people. And we just love that other organizations want to come to us and host events with us because of our location as well, because of the space, and because we're always welcoming to people, just helping. If you want to help, come to us. We will help as well. We'll get together and figure out how we can help even more people in whatever aspect. Um, so we are we're just thrilled to be a part of everything and anything. The Crush Coalition, Prevent Aid, uh Department of Mental Health, the Opioid Initiative. We have been boisterous in all of these different organizations and functions because we want people to know that just because an individual has a substance use disorder does not mean that they are not worthy of of having, you know, a a a life, of worthy of living. So our name, Living with Purpose, comes with that connotation that every life has a pers- purpose because every life that we encounter, we want to make sure that they understand that you have a purpose. We may not know what your purpose is right now, but that's what we're here for, to help you to figure out what that purpose is. So we do um free adult GED classes. We do free uh CPR first aid training. We actually do free Narcan uh training as well now because of, again, what's going on with the opioid crisis and so many overdose deaths in the communities. Um, we are doing health education classes because health goes along with everything in life. So we're doing all these different things with the, you know, just wanting people to see that there is a different way. There is a different way. There's a different route. There's people who care. So we have MOUs with Queen of Peace. We have MOUs with St. Louis City Drug Court, and we're working on an MOU currently with St. Louis County Drug Court to do differently things as far as sober outings, getting people to experience different things that they've never had an opportunity, like a spa. A a facial for a woman is a mind changing thing. It will make a woman come out feeling like a whole new person. So we want to be able to give these people access to these things so that they can understand that um they don't have to be sedentary in their situation. They don't have to be stagnant or stuck. There is more to life. And we just want them to be able to experience that. And so the events that we host are are just to make people, you know, feel better and see that there are people out here who care about their outcomes. And we are one of those people. We are one of those organizations.
Thank you, Kim, and uh, Mr. President, I want.
I couldn't get off on YouTube. But go ahead. Let's give him a big round of applause. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to also add that the services that they provide are free. Everything is free. And not only do they do those services, but they have grants that give they have offered to give away a car to a family in need. Um, you know, and and for a a single parent or for a family who can't afford a vehicle, that is an amazing feat for them to be able to do that um for someone in the community. And I'm just so proud that they're in the second ward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Alderman from the twenty third.
A couple of things. One, one, when I heard free cotton candy, you hit me at that. I kind of did my own haircut. But, you know, obviously, we should do this in bank, and I want to make that motion. But I did want to say, you know, what you guys do i- is wonderful and showing a different way, a different path. You know, that that's, you know, you you should be commended. And I'm a guy, and I like facials myself. I mean, facials are wonderful. I'm probably one of the few. I'll go get a pedicure and a facial in a heartbeat. So uh, anyway, I I would like to make a motion. We do this in bank. Uh, and thank you so much for all the work you do.
Been moved by all from twenty third, second by the Alderman from the twenty sixth, I believe. Uh, that we make this Resolution one eighty one and bank in a discussion. All in favor, signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Create another copy of Resolution one eighty one in bank. Any further discussion, further discussion? Well, Kimberly, uh, where do I start? Um, you know, having had family members that were, uh, you know, they got a good way to put that ended up in the life of alcohol abuse and and drug abuse and and those sorts of things. Uh, one of the things that I always oftentimes try to remind people is that that's not all a person is. That's not all a person can be or will be. Um, you know, that's the state that they're in now. And if given some help and given the resources, that person go on and do some great things, right? Uh, and I've seen that uh in my family and in in my also my extended family. And so when I think about your name, Living with Purpose, uh, that encapsulates it all. It tells you that uh that your organization is going to connect the people with the reso- with the resources they need and give them the support mechanisms they need and the life skills they need to transition to become all that they can be and to live with purpose. So I thank you for that. And I'm, you know, along with everybody else on this uh on this uh in this meeting and residents across the city of St. Louis that cannot thank you personally, I want to thank you. Um, a lot of the Aldermen uh today, I know that they're feeling the same way I'm feeling about it. Um, and you heard me say earlier, this one, this one has special significance, even though uh this is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. But those organizations that the African American Caucus go when they go out and handpick those organizations to recognize them during Black History Month, uh, that's significant because that says that says that this business has achieved so much and has done so much within our communities. We want to not only give them special recognition, but make sure that they're one of those businesses that we recognize during that time, right? So, you know, as African Americans, we've had our history rewritten. We've been written out of history, and history's been written around us. But this, the reason this is so significant is because it's it only a sitting Alderperson can do it, right? And once it's putting those permanent records, it's not like Wikipedia or anything else. You can't just go change. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the city of St. Louis and you look at how St. Louis had came together to begin to address the issues of addiction and to bring families together, make family whole, families whole again, they will read about Living with Purpose, and they will read about you, and they will read about this day. So let's give her a big round of applause and thank you to the entire organization. Thank you so much, Kimberly. Any parting comments before we uh between you or this sponsor? Thank you so much. Let's give a sponsor a big round of applause. Any parting comments between the sponsor or Kimberly?
No, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks again, Kim. Been moved the second that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction, round of guests, anybody, Alderman from the twenty third.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer. Uh, guest, and also my wife Sue, who's on vacation. So she's stuck in the house with me today.
Oh, man.
Yeah, she should be my guest.
Feel sorry for you, Sue. Any further, Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I'd like to introduce my friend Kathy Birch, who is uh on watching today. She's my constituent and my friend, and uh she watches faithfully. So she, this is the first time she's consented to letting me introduce her, but she's watching. Okay.
All along from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I have as my honored guest, Pre Middlebrook, who is home with an earache. Um, and she is just excited to say hi to everybody. She's been trying to say hi since I logged on this morning. Hi, Kay.
Thanks for joining. All all the one from the fourth. All one.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. My honored guest this week is, I have uh several of my fourth ward developers, and I'd like to uh give recognition to Laura Hughes, a fluidly development company, also the Lobster Brothers. Those are our developers. And I also like to uh honor Julia Allen, who is a great historian for the Veal. And um my committee man, Ed McFaul, and committee woman Carolyn Moore.
All right, so, all right, so we have uh Ms. Hughes, the Lobster Brothers, um, Julia Allen, uh, then the, who else?
Carolyn Moore and Ed McFaul.
Carolyn Moore and Ed McFaul. Let's give them a round of applause. Alderman from the third. Actually, actually, Alderman from third, hold on for a second. Alderman from twenty seventh, had their hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize the St. Louis Public School Board members. Uh, this is the finalizing of the school board week, and I want to congratulate them for stepping out and fighting for the students of St. Louis Public Schools. So congratulations, St. Louis School Board, and uh on your uh St. Louis School Board week.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce as my honored guest is the spirit of Mr. Stephen Smith, who was born to an enslaved woman and became one of the richest black men in the history of the United States and also came back to free enslaved slaves who were looking to find freedom with the Underground Railroad. He owned a bunch of trains and tracks where he was allowed to transport slaves from one point to another back in the eighteen hundreds, from about eighteen thirty to eighteen forty. So once again, one of the richest men uh known to be black men in the history of the country, one of the first, his name is Stephen Smith. So I'd like to introduce his spirit as my honored guest. Thank you.
All right, welcome. Uh, Alderman from the fifth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, especially given that this is African American History Month. I would like to uh introduce two very special guests today. Uh, the first is Ms. Lois Conley of the Griot Museum of African American History. And the second is Mr. Calvin Riley, the curator of the George B. Vashon Museum. It is my pleasure to have them as my guests and as operators of African American history museums where in the fabulous Fifth Ward. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, let's welcome Ms. Conley and Mr. Riley. Thank you, Ms. Alderman Page, for those introductions. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, dear colleagues here at the board. I have a new setup for my Zoom, so my apologies if it's a little.
It looks great.
Oh, good, good, okay. My honored guest for today is uh one of my rugby brothers from back when I played rugby here in St. Louis, Mr. Zachary Nye, uh, N I E, who is having a birthday today on this beautiful, vibrant, green, verdant, warm day uh here in the city of St. Louis. Um, he also does not like the snow, much like myself. But uh, to my rugby brother, I just wanted to say, and my honored guest today, I just wanted to say, with you, as we say in the sport, and with that, I yield back. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excellent. So let's give her a big round of applause. Happy birthday to uh rugby player Zachary Nye. That's a tough sport. Tied away. Yeah. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on February eighteenth, twenty twenty two, which hopefully you all take advantage of. This is National Drink Wine Day. So everyone, please partake. But on this day in nineteen seventy seven, the rock band Kiss played their first live concert. And if you really look underneath the makeup, you'd notice that the drummer was actually the Alderman from the twenty third that day.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
Approval of the minutes, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, February the eleventh, twenty twenty two.
All of them from the tenth, recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The move that we approved the minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty two.
From tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourth, any discussion? And all in favor, signify percent, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Motion carries reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
That's relying item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal accounts? Anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off any of our form, any of our informal accounts? With Spencer line items eight through ten, first reading the board bills.
Board Bill one eighty seven, sponsored by Alderman Co., and ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportement pertaining to the process through the City of St. Louis Airport Authority lets concessions contracts at St. Louis Maverick International Airport contain a severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty twenty two to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K unrestricted unrestricted district to H area commercial district and city block two one nine six, so as to include the described portions of land in city block two one nine six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty nine, sponsored by Alderman Stevens, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty twenty two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the A single family dwelling district to F neighborhood commercial district and city block four six nine six, so as to include the described portions of land in city block four six nine six and contain an emergency clause. as to include the described portions of land in city block four six nine six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety sponsored by Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J industrial district to F neighborhood commercial district in city block one five five six so as to include the described portions of land in city block one five five six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-one sponsored by Alderman Boyd and Alderman Todd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement authorizing the Department of Parks Recreation and Forestry a portion of funds originally appropriated in ordinance number seven one two four six to the St. Louis Development Corporation for Maintenance of Land Reutilization Authority Properties and containing emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-two sponsored by Alderman Howard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine five and ordinance directing the director of streets to install a speed hump to calm the flow of traffic on the forty-nine hundred block and five, through the five thousand hundred block of Lansdowne Avenue between the intersection of Lansdowne Avenue and Kings Highway Boulevard and Lansdowne Avenue and Brandon Avenue. Board Bill one ninety-three sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and Alderman Tyus. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement authorizing the fire chief on behalf of the City of St. Louis, I'm sorry, the fire chief on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute an assistance to firefighters grant with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security appropriating said funds and a required city match for said funds authorizing the fire chief to expand the appropriate funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-four sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Tyus. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement authorizing the, the director of the Department of Public Safety or his designated on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute the U.S. Department of Justice twenty twenty-one Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to accept funds awarded appropriated said funds and authorize the Department of Public Safety to expand the appropriate funds for allowed purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-five sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Ryan. An ordinance authorizing the department, the authorizing the director of Department of Public Safety or the police commissioner to enter into and execute and administer on behalf of the city agreements in substantially the form attached as exhibit A here to regarding reimbursements of the city for the cost of training for law enforcement trainees who do not accept law enforcement positions with the city or who leave their law enforcement positions in a short period of time and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-six sponsored by Alderman Appeals. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K restricted district to H area commercial district and city block three nine one eight point zero three so as to include the described portions of land in city block three nine one eight point zero three and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-seven sponsored by Alderman Martin. The proposed board bill creates a prevailing wage enforcement coordinator to actively monitor prevailing wage and minority women-owned business enterprise compliant laws and ordinances with the city contain the severability penalty emergent, I'm sorry, containing a severability penalty, emergency and codification clauses. Board Bill one ninety-eight sponsored by Alderman Martin. An ordinance to make it unlawful for an individual to operate an all-terrain vehicle as defined herein on any public right of way or public property in the city. Board Bill one ninety-nine sponsored by Alderman Calder. An ordinance amending ordinance number six seven four zero two, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated March seventeenth, two thousand and seven to be extended and the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Consolidated Grain and Board Company, a Missouri corporation, contain the severability clause. Or Bill two hundred sponsored by Alderman Calder pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine five and ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the twenty-two hundred block of Indiana Avenue, the twenty-two hundred block of Missouri Avenue, Mississippi Avenue between Guyer Avenue and the Interstate Forty-four overpass, the twenty-two hundred block of Jewels, the twenty-one hundred block of Guyer, the two thousand hundred block of Guyer and the two thousand block of Ann Avenue, the twenty-one hundred block of Ann Avenue and the two thousand block of, I'm sorry, that was Allen Avenue. Twenty-one hundred block of Allen Avenue and a two thousand hundred block of Allen Avenue. Board Bill two zero one sponsored by Alderman Bacaro and ordinance amending section one of ordinance five seven eight three one pertaining to the vehicle exhaust system specifically prohibited straight pipe exhaust systems. Board Bill two zero two sponsored by Alderman Odenberg. An ordinance prohibiting persons who are subject to a restraining order or have been convicted of a misdemeanor crime of domestic violence from carrying concealed firearms in the city. Or Bill two zero three sponsored by Alderman Rice. An ordinance, a man ordinance number six two one two four codified in the revised code of the City of St. Louis as chapter six point two zero pertaining to service contracts to conform with intent and federal statutes direction. For Bill two zero four sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance amending ordinance numbers six seven two nine two nine nine, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement between, I'm sorry, dated February the ninth, two thousand and seven to be extended and the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Louis, Missouri and Aber, Aberici Constructors, a Missouri corporation authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to a lease agreement between the city and leasing under certain terms and conditions for a period of five years with one more five, five-year mutual options for the land and morn rights for one hundred and fifteen thousand, twenty dollars and one cent for the first year and increasing each year thereafter as set forth in the said First Amendment as attached here to exhibit A and contain the severability clause. Board Bill two zero five sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance amending ordinance number seven one three eight seven, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated December first, twenty twenty-one between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Grossman Central Company, formerly known as Grossman Iron and Steel Company, a Missouri corporation consenting to the assignment of said lease agreement to Advantage Metals Recycling LLC, a Delaware limited liability company and containing the severability clause. Board Bill two zero six sponsored by Alderman Odenberg. An ordinance amending ordinance number seven one three four five commonly referred to as as the City of St. Louis Annual Operating Plan for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two by the addition of a new line item, Police, Police Department Real-Time Crime Center and amended ordinance number seven one three nine three to reappropriate two point five million of the five million of the twenty twenty-one corona, coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds appropriated to the police department or a police department overtime to the real-time crime center. Board Bill two zero seven sponsored by Alderman Martin and Alderman Ingracia. An ordinance to require food establishment as defined in chapter one one point four two point zero four zero of the revised code of the City of St. Louis to make water and low-fat milk the default beverage options offered with food establishment children's meal. Board Bill two zero eight sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance pertaining to the creation of funds to assist in the city's efforts to support African Americans who have been victims of the effects of slavery, authorizing the comptroller to establish the Reparation Fund and establish the Midwest Land Development Fund. Board Bill two zero nine sponsored by Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance accepting phase four provider relief funding and authorizing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to contract to expand such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two ten sponsored by Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance authorizing the Fire Commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to ex, and to contract to extend such funds and to, and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two eleven sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance establishing the Third Ward Residential Parking District and location and restriction for current parking within the Third Ward Residential Parking District and authorizing the placement of permit parking only signs and prohibited parking of, of any vehicle in the district that does not display the required permit and providing a penalty for violations and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill one eighty-seven, one ninety-nine, two zero four and two zero five to the HUD's Committee, Board Bill one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one ninety, one ninety-six, one ninety-seven, two zero three, two zero six and two zero eight to the Parks Committee, Board Bill one ninety-one, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill one ninety-two, one ninety-four, two hundred and two eleven to the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill one ninety-three, one ninety-five, one ninety-eight, two zero one, two zero two, two zero nine and two ten and to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill two zero seven. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill one forty-seven sponsored by Alderman Martin. An ordinance amending ordinance number six eight nine six three, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated October the nineteenth, twenty eleven to be extended in the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and ACBL Transportation Services LLC, formerly known as ACL Transportation Services LLC, contain the severability clause. Board Bill one seventy-two sponsored by Alderman Co. An ordinance recommended by the recommend and approved by the Airport Commission and a Board of Estment Apportement amending ordinance number seven one two eight eight approved on December fourth, twenty twenty and the Air Service Initiative Program for Fiscal Years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three as adopted by ordinance number seven one two eight eight contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-three sponsored by Alderman Co. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller and the Board of Estment Apportement making findings respecting the transfer of a maximum of thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the City of St. Louis, Missouri, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the debt service stabilization fund to the airport revenue fund during fiscal year twenty twenty-two containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-four sponsored by Alderman Co. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment and Apportement providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator owner of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the Airport Development Fund through the Airport Contingency Fund into the Airport Revenue Fund in order to fund the Airport Service Initiative Program for Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one through Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four containing the severability clause and containing the emergency clause. For Bill one eighty-six sponsored by Alderman Co. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement authorized and directing the issuance, establishment of terms and negotiated sale of airport revenue funding bonds not to exceed twenty million dollars to effect the refunding of certain outstanding bonds providing for the funding of any required debt service reserve fund and for the payment of cost issuance and appointing a trustee approving the form of any indenture and authorizing the preparation, execution and delivery of such document and actions are as necessary or appropriate, repealing inconsistent prior ordinance, ordinance provisions and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee with the due pass recommendation. For Bill one sixty-seven sponsored by Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of McCaslin Ave, Avenue and Bancroft Avenue regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on McCaslin Avenue and Bancroft Avenue contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-seven sponsored by Alderman Davis. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the remaining two oh five foot irregular shaped portion of the twenty foot wide east-west alley in city block nineteen sixty beginning at Spring Avenue and continuing eastward to its terminus as herein after described in accordance with a chart authority and in conformity with section one, article twenty-one of the charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. The following board bill was reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one sixty-five sponsored by Alderman Bacaro. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement and authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute an agreement with the RTI International to extract all crime incident reports maintained by the Department for offenses occurring twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, yeah, two thousand, twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-three with specific data outlined in the contract authorizing the police commissioner or his designated to enter into contracts and expand funds to extent received containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of ways and means with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighty-four as amended sponsored by Alderman Odenberg and Alderman Howard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportement authorizing an appropriation consisting of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Funds received into the City's Capital Fund pursuant to ordinance six zero four one nine as amended by ordinance number six one two five zero representing one half of the operating balance of the general fund from the preceding fiscal year and revenues of, according to the Public Safety Infrastructure Account of the Economic Development Sales Tax Fund, all for the purposes of funding capital improvement totaling eighty-six million, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars as herein after this detail and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading reported standing committees.
With the Spence with line item fourteen. I'm gonna give you just one second to catch your breath, because you've been reading. You, you ready?
Yes.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill one twenty-six sponsored by Alderman Peel and the following other persons. Clark Hubbard, Jay Boyd, Bacaro, Pam Boyd, Bosley, Switzer, Tyus and Evans. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission approving the renaming of the entire length of a public street in the City of St. Louis Children's Place extending between Euclid Avenue on the west to Taylor Avenue on the east to be renamed to the to Nash Way to celebrate the accomplishment and cultural impact of Dr. Helen Nash on the St. Louis region. Board Bill one seventy sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface and subsurface rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the southern feet of the twenty-foot wide north-south alley also known as Cabin Way in city block four five four seven as bound to back Clemens, Clara, Enright, Goodfellow and the City of St. Louis, Missouri as herein after described in accordance with chart authority and in conformity with section one of article twenty-one of the charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognized on the motion for our perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by all from the tenth and attain second. Second about all one from the twenty-six or twenty-seven, second about all one from the twenty-seven, discussion. All in favor, signify percent I.
I.
Oppose. Motion carries. By vote, you adopted our perfection consent count. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one fifty-one sponsored by Alderman Peel. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment Apportement wherein the Board of Alderman appropriates equitable development contribution funds related to the city foundry, St. Louis redevelopment area to the Affordable Housing Commission for the purposes of supporting affordable housing contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause.
All one from the seventeenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one fifty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, yes, I move to perfect Board Bill one fifty-one.
Thank you, all one from the seventeenth, saying about all, all from the ninth, all one from the seventeenth, please proceed.
Yes, Board Bill one fifty-one, the purpose of the, uh, bill is to appropriate the one point eight million dollars uh, from the equitable development contribution to the Affordable Housing Commission. So on July first, twenty twenty-one, the Board of Alderman approved through Board Bill seventy-three to create the. to create the equitable development contribution. And these funds have actually been deposited into the Affordable Housing Commission. And what we're doing today is that this board bill is coming before you because like similar fundings, like grants, uh, we need to accept these, we need to accept these funds for its expenditure. And so required by Budget Director Paul Payne and Comptroller, Comptroller Marlene Green, I present this board bill. The details regarding, uh, the equitable development contribution, which was discussed in Board Bill seventy-three and was approved, is that, uh, these, uh, these funds are going to be used for, um, affordable housing repair, uh, one point eight million dollars. Fifty percent is going to be allocated to north of Delmar. And fifty percent of the funds are going to be allocated to the seventeenth ward. If the funds are not all used within five years in the seventeenth ward, they will be open to be used north of Delmar. Uh, the priority for these funds will be going to seniors, people with disabilities, and individuals who are on the waitlist for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the help, healthy home repair. I seek the acceptance of these expenditures to be put into the Affordable Housing Commission according to Board Bill one fifty-one. I'm open to any questions.
All right, any, uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, all along from the first.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, um, this is a great, uh, what they did back, uh, last year was great. And it was a first, great first step, um, should have been done several years ago. I didn't think people understood the equitable, uh, equitable division of when you are getting so much development in certain parts of town that you need to take part of that money and move to another part of town. So it took a new Alderperson from the seventeenth ward that, uh, understood that much better than the one that was previous who would not participate and should have done it many years ago. He and I served a lot of years, so I know how selfish he was. And so this is really the spirit in which development is supposed to be done. I would like to say that I would like, uh, for us to stop talking about the Delmar divide because it's really become the Page divide. And if you really look at it, a lot of stuff is being done between Delmar and Page. And so what, uh, previous mayoral administrations have done when we raised heck about the Delmar divide is then they start giving all the money to the people between Delmar and Page, which also helped the Central West End because it, uh, helped those, uh, black wards that abut at the Central West End. So it continued the racist, uh, development pattern that has to be broken. Uh, my ward used to do a lot of development before we were re, uh, gerrymandered, racially gerrymandered. And so if we're really going to address that, because I still, I just want to compliment you for doing that because it was so good. But if you really go back, and I know this from, I served with Irving Clay, the former Alderman from the twenty-six wards. So I know when the plans went into effect to, um, take between Delmar and Page and do the development. And if you go up in there, that's been done. Wash U has a north campus. They built three and four hundred thousand dollar houses between, uh, uh, Delmar and Page. They're continuously doing the development, so that is no longer the divide. That is a misnomer when people put that Delmar divide out, and it should be the Page divide. That's why we, when the Black Caucus, we talk about, we want to be included. We don't talk about the Delmar divide anymore. When we say we want to be on commissions and things like that, we talk about the Page divide. And it's very, very easily proven what I'm saying. If you go and look at the development that has occurred and even who they put on the committees and the commissions, they do it and then they say, well, we got black people on there because they live between Page and Delmar. So let's stop using that and let's start using the real divide, which is now the Page divide. But I do want to compliment you on that, um, um, that's a generous spirit. That's the way development is supposed to be done. It should not be all in downtown and central quarter. And when you have extra monies like that, especially since we spent a lot of block grant money, that if you look at the application, it was, uh, the block grant money that we got was on the backs of North Saint Louis because the applications talk about the ills of North Saint Louis. But the actual execution of the dollar funds was, uh, downtown, which when I got here was no, no community or a lot of the Central West End and some of the South Saint Louis wards. So, uh, if we're going to be just, uh, honest, we really, it is. And, and many of us in the caucus know it's the Page divide now. But if you don't believe me, I can really easily document it with what has been done and the amount of development that's been done between Delmar and Page. So let's stop using that misnomer. But again, I want to thank you for this because this is our forward thinking. This is how you change things. So I appreciate it. I am a supporter. And I just want to appreciate you for being able to see beyond your own, um, ward and selfishness. So I appreciate it. I have no further, uh, comments.
All right, thank you, all along. Alderman from the ninth.
Hey, Mr. President, um, I just wanted to thank the Alderwoman from the seventeenth for her persistent work on this. Uh, she is changing the way that, uh, incentives, uh, we approach incentives in the city. And I would like to ask that my name be added as a co-sponsor to Board Bill one fifty-one. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, all along from the seventeenth, we recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would love to, uh, just thank the Board of Alder men and women for approving this contribution. Uh, we need to, as Alderwoman Tyers stated, you know, share our wealth when we have that and bring that to places that have been left out. And I am here and I ran on bridging, uh, the divides. And so I would like, uh, for the Board of Aldermen to accept the equitable development contribution that the City Foundry has provided us. And, um, you know, it goes in terms of, again, my running in terms of accountability, community, and equity. This is going to mitigate displacement as the north side and even, uh, the seventeenth ward is being redeveloped. And so we're utilizing a tool that I don't like to reinvent the wheel. I want the wheel, I want to improve on the wheel. And so as I've always been mentioning, this came from something that I learned in Boston through the, uh, Boston Linkage Fund. And I would like to say that, you know, in terms of the seventeenth ward, you know, we would not maybe use this all over the City of Saint Louis. But in terms of the seventeenth ward, I link it really to, uh, places like Boston and, uh, New York City and California and where places are thriving. And we need to increase, that we need to help in terms of repairing the affordable housing, people who are living in affordable housing so that they can stay there, these long-term residents. And so thank you, and I appreciate this.
All right, thank you. It's been moved about all from from seventeen, second about all from ninth that we perfect Board Bill one fifty-one. All in favor, signal five percent, aye.
And the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill one sixty-four, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-six, one fifty-seven, one fifty-eight, one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, and one sixty-nine.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion for a third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Um, from tenth, second about all from twenty-second and the, all from twenty-second and all the one from the fourteenth. Uh, any discussion? It's been moved, it's moved by all from tenth, second about all, Alderman from twenty-second and all the one from the fourteenth that we third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyers. Aye. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ngrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Moran.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. I'm sorry, Alderman Todd.
Can you hear me? Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Narayan.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Twenty-eight aye votes.
I vote staying motion all along from tenth and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills, third reading reported in Groshen's.
Board Bill one sixty-four, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one fifty-six, one fifty-seven, one fifty-eight, one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, and one sixty-nine.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session fix this signature here too to the end that these may become law. That may take a second today. First reading resolutions.
Resolution one seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and the following other persons. Ngrasia, Rice, Stevens, Gunther, Pam Boyd, Narayan, Green, Davis, and Morton. Amending Board of Alderman Rules to preclude members from voting or being counted present at meetings when driving a vehicle.
All women from the thirteenth, you recognize on first reading of resolution one seventy-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to ask for unanimous consent on resolution one seventy-eight.
Hearing no objection, please.
Objection, objection, objection.
There's an objection to, uh, unanimous consent. Um, all the ones, so your choices are to send it to committee, um, or move to suspend the rule.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules to, um, bring a resolution one seventy-eight in front of us today.
Right, you can, you can discuss resolution one seventy-eight, uh, just.
Before I make the motion.
The structure of it, and then you can move to, um, move to suspend the rules. But the discussion for the rest of the board will be based on the move to suspend the rules. Why don't we just, why don't we just make it simple for everybody? Move to spend rules and then we, then we go from there, otherwise it'll just go.
That's what I would like to do. I move to suspend the rules, uh, to bring resolution one seventy-eight in front of us today.
Move, and move about all along, all of them from thirteenth and second it by, I think it was all from twenty-four. And second about all from twenty-fourth, um. It's been moved and seconded that we spend the rules for purposes of adopting resolution one seventy-eight, uh, today. Any further discussion? All women from the first, you have a discussion item on just the suspension or the resolution itself.
I can tell you what, uh, so it's why I'm opposed to suspending the rules because I think it should be sent to committee, not that I'm necessarily opposed to the resolution. The resolution has flaws in it. So that's, um, that's why I'm opposed to it. So if you don't want me to say why I'm opposed to suspending the rules, they're connected.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, uh, all the women from the thirteenth, do you still want to suspend the rules or would you like to send it to committee?
I, I'd still like to suspend the rules. Um, I, I am interested in what the flaws are if that's something that we can't deal with today in the board. We can only make changes to the resolution in committee. Is that true?
You can make them here also, but.
Right, I, I, you know, I think.
Can get into a much deeper discussion in committee and, and deal with it better in committee. Um, but, uh, but hold on a second, so. Alderman from the, let me get back in order. Alderman from the twenty-third, you have a discussion on just the suspension of the rules, not the.
I understand. So, yeah, I'm, I am not in favor of suspending the rules. Uh, I, I am in favor of, 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 of the, the resolution makes sense. But I do believe it's better discussed in committee. I think that it's going to be a lot more transparent to people about what we're talking about. And it just seems to me committee is the better place to do this. If you suspend and we pass something out today, it's nothing more than a strong letter that we wrote to ourselves. And, uh, I, I'd much rather see it go to committee and, and if we discuss the, the resolution, I, I'd be happy to do that. I, I think it's crazy to drive and.
Thank you, Alderman from the seventh.
I guess I just echo the comments of my colleagues from the first and the twenty-third and they, you know, while I don't think I oppose the, the spirit of what's being proposed, I think, uh, it should be discussed in committee. I mean, changes to our rules would generally go to the Rules Committee. Um, I don't think we should just be willy-nilly changing our rules, uh, by suspending and doing that on the fly without a, a full discussion. So, uh, the sponsors of the resolutions willing, I'm, I'm happy to have a committee hearing in the next week or two, uh, to discuss it.
All right, thank you. Uh, all the one from the first, actually all along from the fourteenth for the first time and then we'll come back to you all one from the first.
I did all those, I, I, as, as the Alderwoman from the first and the others, it's, it's changing our rules and I think it deserves consideration and I think people need to weigh in on it. Um, there's, there's a lot to be considered. This is a new, a new phenomenon that's coming before us and I don't think we should change things lightly. You know, is this something that we're going to be, you know, dealing with from now? Or, you know, once the pandemic's over, we all come back, is, we still going to have to deal with it? I don't see just, you know, as, as the Alderman from the seventh said, willy-nilly changing our rules. I think that it deserves some consideration and, and con, and some robust conversation.
All right, thank you. All the one from the first.
Um, the Alderman from the seventh, who is the Rules Chair, saying what I was going to say that I didn't get a chance, but that was what I was going to say. So I have no further comments and I will be voting against any suspension of the rules. And I urge everybody else to, because there are flaws in it.
All right, it's been moved by all along from thirteenth, second about all from twenty-fourth, uh, that we spend the rules for purposes of adopting resolution one seventy-eight today. Madam Clerk, please call, roll.
Alderwoman Tyus? No. Alderwoman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Bosley?
Nope.
Alderwoman Evans?
No.
Alderman, Alderman Page?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ingracia?
Aye.
Alderman Calder?
No.
Alderwoman Rice?
A pass.
Alderman Gunther? I'm sorry, Alderman, you cut off.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Alderman Ballmer?
Nope.
Alderwoman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
No.
Alderwoman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
No.
Alderwoman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
No.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed?
Pass.
Alderman Boyd?
No.
Alderman Bacaro?
No.
Alderman Norrian?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Pass.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Aye, thank you. Alderwoman Boyd?
No.
President Reed?
No.
Alderwoman Rice?
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel?
Uh, present.
Alderman Mohammed?
Present.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Thirteen aye votes, thirteen no votes, and two voted present.
I vote you fail to stay in the motion all along from thirteenth. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution one seventy-eight to rules.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
It's an unfinished business.
We have none.
Uh, nonsense.
Monday, February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, the office will be closed in honor of Presidents' Day. Tuesday, February the twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, Hoods will have a meet at nine AM. Via Webinar, Public Safety will have a meet at eleven AM. Via Webinar, Streets will have a meet at eleven thirty AM via Webinar. Legislation will have a meet at one PM via Webinar. Wednesday, February the twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, Parks will have a meet at nine AM via Webinar. Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via Webinar. Neighborhood, Neighborhood Development will meet at one PM via Webinar. Thursday, February the twenty-fourth, Transportation and Commerce will have a meet at nine AM via Webinar. And Friday, February the twenty-fifth, Four Board Meeting, ten AM via Webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All the women from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I have a couple of announcements. You know, at the Inklamit Weathers, we have some of the events at the History Museum have to get rescheduled. But this Saturday, February nineteenth, from ten AM to two PM, they will still be having the protest and progress of St. Louis Neighborhood and it's an ongoing exhibit throughout the neighborhood, a family-friendly event. So it's an opportunity to again, share some Black history experiences with not just yourself but with your children. And then on Sunday, you can come on back to the History Museum because as you know, Pure Catering STL, who I brag on all the time, I am Pure Catering's Alder Lady too. They run Pure Cafe in the History Museum and this Sunday, they will be having a brunch that's going to be soul food. So all of you that want to experience some good soul food this Black History Month, things like fried chicken, pork chops, cabbage, candy yams, chicken dressing, green beans, waffles, turkey bacon, all kind of things will be going on. That's from eleven to three at Cafe Pure at the St. Louis Missouri History Museum. So I hope to see you out there.
Excellent, thank you for that. All the men from the sub.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to announce, you know, this weekend is Taste of Soulard and the Purina Pet Parade. Taste of Soulard is in the Mardi Gras and Missouri Lottery Run for Your Beads five K are tomorrow, Saturday in the morning and Taste of Soulard goes all day. And then Sunday, I believe at one PM is the Purina Pet Parade. Come on down. I think it's supposed to warm up and hopefully the ice will melt and we'll have a good time. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All, all men from the twenty-third. I think you took your hand down. All men from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I couldn't catch the clerk's announcements. I wanted to make sure that the Transportation and Commerce Committee is on the calendar for nine AM on Thursday, the February twenty-fourth.
Okay, all right, so noted.
Thank you.
All right, any further announcements, any further announcements? All right. All men from tenth, recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm happy to announce that in one way or another, every Alderman and Alderperson is present today. Thank you.
That's great news. All men from tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
All men from tenth, second about all of them from twenty-fifth. He's all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody was so happy to adjourn. All right, see you all next week.